I'm good, tomorrow.
I have approval of posting, will you join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I have a motion to approve the agenda. Move. Do you have a second?
I'll say it.
Any correction or changes? Jim?
Yes.
James? Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I hope yes as well. You got nothing to mark?
Couple things, men team will be working tomorrow on this, but working on calendar. Again, I'm involved by the middle school, high school administration. What our challenge was is to create a little more buffer in terms of snow days. Now, we haven't used any weather days. And that was our first conversation. Are there minutes within the day that we could use differently? And so, right now, we've figured out a way, conceptually, to add 12 minutes a day to the middle school, high school, within the existing. They would start five minutes earlier, but it'd be within the 7:30, 3:30, 3:40, 7:45 to 3:45. And what that does is gives us an additional 35 hours at the middle school and high school. With that, that would provide us, and we'll continue to verify this, instead of having only four hours at the high school over our buffer minimum, we would be up to 39. The middle school, the high school would still be the closest to the minimum hours. And the other thing that's important is we now can go on time and not time and days. So, we're looking at what types of flexibilities could be created. I know I've been approached, other administrators have been approached, about using professional development a little bit differently. And so, we've put together, conceptually, some clusters of taking away some of the half-days. On like in December, in January, we talked about not having a early release day because we have so much vacation time there. But then, maybe having a full day later in January, maybe Martin Luther King Day as a holiday. That would also align, since Stane County, there's a lot of governmental workers. That would also align with parents' days off. Sometimes, the early release days, you know, it's that balance. So, getting work done in a half, half the day, because you can't go all day, all the time. And there's not always topics that you can go all day on. So, we're gonna probably, at the next board meeting, bring up some concepts, just to bounce them off the board, see how you feel, while so do the same with our staff. So, we started working on that last week, we'll work on it a little bit more. You know, other things we're looking at is just the length of the school year, but also getting quality professional development in for our staff, perhaps before the beginning of the year. One of the questions we've had, as we've done adoptions, is how do we get new staff aware of the curriculum we're teaching, perhaps with new staff having one additional day in service for them. And the other concept that's been discussed with staff a little bit is the way we have buyout currently, would be, there'd be a better way of using buyout. Maybe paint it forward, having some all-day buyout sessions in August. People could choose to do that, providing some all-day buyout options in August. And then, people would walk in the door and they'd know one day of professional development's done through the year. Thank you, everybody that's contributed to that. Mount Hore class, been in contact with them. They are starting the planning process, this is for the replacement of the middle school windows, as well as the district office windows, installed in 1995. They will be doing some testing outside, need to check with you, with the seventh grade science room. We may want to do some window tests, so that would be a classroom. I believe that's the only exterior classroom with exterior windows that's not being used on a regular basis right now in the middle school. We'd also could do the window and break room also in the district office for some tests. So, hopefully, that will get rolling. In front of you is the referendum flyer. As you've noticed, they probably received a postcard late last week as a reminder. But this is the flyer that will be in both the March and April newsletters. Also, the newsletter, the March newsletter has a feature, again, John Nelson, has helped us in our recall of the relationships between the community and school. And then, just lastly, parent-teacher conferences are this Thursday evening and Friday morning, evening. That's all I have.
Thank you. Public input. District business personnel, discuss possible action to hire Clinton Williams, high school assistant varsity coach for the 2015 season with a starting annual stipend of $2,100. Do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions?
From the district? Is he?
I'm not sure. I believe so.
But I can't.
Rich isn't here, but he's.
Yeah, oh, I'm not, yeah, I'm not questioning your recommendation, just I don't know who he is. All right, any further discussion? Mary Nunn, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I hope yes as well. Discuss possible action to hire Joyce Ruland, EA 1.0 FTE. Do you have a motion? Do you have a second?
Okay.
Thank you. Annual salary.
Well, she's currently, she's currently employed in the district. She's being moved from point four to four.
Oh, okay.
So, she's already employed.
Okay. All right. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yep.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I hope yes as well.
And while it may be obvious, no, it does not restart her probation. Her date of hire would be from last fall.
Discuss possible action to approve the CISA V service contract for the 1516 school year. Do you have a motion?
Move.
Thank you. So, that's for PT, OT, and nursing.
Nurse, audiology, and period and itinerant. And you may wonder what's different from this year and last year. We reduced the amount of services for PT per CISA V's recommendation. The nurses now, we contract with nursing instead of, previously, or in recent past, the nurse was a district employee. And then, we've had some students that have educational needs and supports, and so, we've added that this year.
Okay.
And this is an estimate, and they keep us advised in terms of changes or things going variously.
Okay. Any other questions? Mary Nunn.
Our CISA, oh, I'm ready, we'll get right on it.
So, we have a CISA II rep.
CISA II rep.
We don't have a CISA V rep, no.
No, no, no.
I think that's the second B senior.
You know, we're vice president.
You want to set something that, you know, has some experience with the CISA.
You're right.
Yeah, there you go.
Jim?
Yes.
James?
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I hope yes as well. HSR, presentation on two capital projects, Mayso Elementary HVAC and high school, middle school pavement projects.
I want to welcome Brad Simonson and Jake.
Barrett?
Yeah, that's what I'm making, yeah. Both HSR. Jake has been, has come to the front, now is in charge of the HVAC for the, for HSR. Was kind of brought online as he took his path promotion. So, turn it over to Brad.
Okay, great. Thanks for having us, good to see everybody again. We'll tag team a little bit here, but again, we want to try to outline the two projects. One is the Mayso Elementary Cooling Project that you are looking to try to do this summer. And then, also, the middle school, high school paving project, again, displayed for the summer. We're, what we're suggesting we do is, number one, kind of sink our teeth into some design development for both projects. We've already tried to at least look at, conceptually, outlining two options at Mayso Elementary or Cooling. One option, we're suggesting maybe is a little more of a recommendation. Number one, would be a simpler, chiller replacement option that would certainly include updating the control system. In the language is going to be a huge savings for operations. And then, also, updating some VAV and some of the, in for an intricate piece of equipment building, along with the chiller itself. Our estimate right now for that part of the project is about $460,000 were sold. And we're suggesting our fee would be about 10% of that, about $46,000. So, what we suggested in our proposal to Mark and you guys is that we work on an hourly rate basis, not to exceed that $46,000 for that part of the project. And what we're gonna do for you on that is, we'll look at a variety of options in terms of the mechanics of the system, and study it, and work with the staff and your administration team here to, and certainly your Mayso crew, and try to define, conceptually, a little more design development, exactly what the best options are for replacing the system, upgrading the system, okay? So, what we suggest is, maybe within a month, we would have that design development package put together for you, and have a good working session with you, update the cost estimate accordingly. Once we get that next approval step in a month, or maybe a little less, we would suggest, and maybe you guys can approve of going to bidding, okay? So, what we would do then is, complete the rest of the construction documents for you and specifications, so that we have a real firm, accurate set of information that we can send out to bidders for getting competitive bids, as well as, obviously, they use that for the construction of the project during that construction. So, we'll receive bids, we'll help you receive the bids, and then analyze the bids, and then select a contractor to do the work. We'll prepare all the contracts for you, and oversee all of that process for you. We're close to with Markings Crew. And then, once, then we'll have a kickoff meeting, or kickoff construction meeting, with the contractors, selected contractor, and then oversee the construction process throughout the summer for you. We probably come down every other week or so, or maybe more often as needed, to help, not only oversee the construction, but also monitor payer requests, make sure they have the right materials going in the building, all those kinds of things. And then, once the construction is completed, or close to completion, we'll do a punch list walkthrough, make sure they got everything coming for them they need to, before you occupy the building and fall. So, that's kind of what we're suggesting for the Mayso. Have I missed anything, Jake, from your perspective in terms of engineering piece?
I don't think so. It was just two options that were thrown out. Option one is pretty much just replacing what you have currently with a newer, more efficient model. Option two was to convert the system to a chilled water in case you wanted to expand on the existing building. You know, it'd be easier to do then, and a little bit more efficient. But, our HSR recommendation would be option one.
Again, we all, when we do these kinds of things, we want to make sure, we try to make sure we're making it flexible for future change or modifications. But we want to also get a system that's going to last a long time too, for you. So, a lot of things that we try to consider. Now, the second piece of the puzzle was the paving.
Brad, maybe just check in with the board, see if there are any questions about the Mayso HVAC? Or do you just want to do the presentation and then discuss each individual?
Do it that way.
Okay. Go ahead, sorry. The second piece is the paving at the, at this building. And what, just look up here to that. Again, we want to help you oversee the entire project. So, what that means to us is, we want to look at a variety of concepts, okay? In terms of, of what to do, where it needs to be done, redone, the simplest painting opportunities and methods that we can redo the paving, but also make sure it's going to be a quality job. So, one of the key criteria for us to do that is to get some geotechnical survey work so long in certain locations. So, what we're gonna do is make a new map here and suggest where we want to get some, some of that geotechnical work done. So, what that means is, we'll contact a construction, a geotechnical company to come out. We'll get some quotes first for that work, and then, and then make a recommendation to you on who did, who did get, and we'll help coordinate that entire process. We might take 10 mornings out here, we might take five, I'm not sure yet, we might take 20. But we want to be, you know, thorough in what we do, even though we might have different sort of conditions here versus here. So, we want to make sure we try to cover this within reason, the areas. Now, once we get that information, the next thing what we need to do is analyze the layout, okay? We want to make sure that the layout is the most effective and efficient layout for parking, drives, and all those things. Now, we might suggest maybe changing up some of the driveways, for instance, that kind of thing. I'm not sure yet, but we'll look at that very closely to make it the most efficient parking and the most safe parking situation, traffic situation as well. So, we'll, we'll look at a variety of options, come back with you again in a month or so, and make some suggestions, and get some feedback from all of you guys. So, once we get through that process, and also along with that, we'll have a more firm cost estimate as to what, if we do just this part of the parking lot, or if we do it all, how much those cost variations might be, okay? And then, and then, once we get kind of focused in on layout and a scheme that everyone's comfortable with, then we'll proceed with developing that design, doing the construction documents and specifications, advertising it for you, sending it out to bidding for bids, competitive bids, help you receive the bids, and then get a general contractor on board to do this work, and then oversee the construction process as well throughout the summer of that work. So, pretty all-inclusive, we'll do a final punch list, make sure everything's done correctly, and just, again, kind of work hand in hand with you throughout the summer, throughout the process. And we suggested our fee in the proposal was $28,000 maximum. And again, because of, we're not fully sure of the scope, we're suggesting that we do it an hourly rate basis, with it not to exceed $28,000, okay? We thought that would seem to be the most fair situation for both of us. So, questions?
I got a question. So, now that sign is up that says you can't make a left-hand turn on Olson Road. I know in the past, we were talking about maybe the town with Black Earth Board, and we want to figure that out, so we can tell them that that's an option, that's in play. Because otherwise, it's going to be no left, no left-hand turn. So, I mean, that might change up the flow of how they want to do things.
I can get ahold of the town chair and try to get on one of their meetings and have a discussion about it.
Yeah, because to me really honestly, before that sign was up, when we had the football games and I was helping direct traffic, it was really nice to send everybody out that way.
Yeah.
And we didn't have any problems, but.
Right.
So, usually, second Tuesday of the month, right?
Yeah, that sounds right.
And if you want us to come join you at a meeting, we'd be more happy to do that too. Because those are the good questions, and we'll make sure we explore.
Would you think, James, it's possibly like a right-hand turn lane, a left-hand turn lane?
Yeah, just want to make sure that they know what they're, so they don't come up with a plan where people are turning left out there, and they realize.
We can't do that, and then get permission to do that, right? Yeah, it would be nice to have a left-hand turn.
Yeah, we've gone and talked to them, but they're aware of it.
And it's nice to have two exits, right? You can go both directions from after a football or basketball, or.
Even if visitors that come here.
Yes.
Yeah.
And even if it's just for that.
Yeah.
That's what we're doing.
Yep.
Right.
Yep.
What, talking about the chiller? What kind of warranties do you expect on a, on a chiller?
Jake?
You can really get whatever we want to ask. Obviously, if we want a longer warranty or a pay for it.
What's normal, Jake? What would be a standard?
Usually, five, 10 years, probably closer to five. It depends on what you're talking about, as far as the chiller, maybe the pressure, or.
So, we're looking roughly 10 years?
Yeah. As we develop a gym tube, as we develop the design, we'll continually talk about that and ask that question, especially when we get into specifications. Okay, this is what we're suggesting we put in for equipment. There'll be a variety of types of equipment and brands, I'm sure. What kind of warranty do we want to expect and put in specifications, okay?
What are VAV boxes?
So, VAV, your system right now is what they call constant volume. So, your air in there is running 100% all the time. And you have some hot water reheat oils in case the classroom or space gets too cold, it'll reheat that air. What a VAV box has is a, pretty much a damper in it, because that'll start closing down the air. So, you're not producing as much air, which reduces on your horsepower and reduces on your reheat, you're not reheating as much air. So, it saves quite a bit of energy. Typically, all new designs are going with VAV boxes. The constant volume, the reheat is kind of what the old system was.
And so, in Mayso, and then the reverse of Black Earth, but for Mayso, we have PE classes in the morning, we have music in the morning. Computer a little bit different, but also with the controls, and not necessarily only the VAV. By having some controls, then we can program so that when students aren't in the room, they'll, we can shut that down also. Right out here, in the program that we did out here, our plan was, and this will come to you at a later date, our, our goal was, we would just replace the pneumatic handlers when they failed. This is one step better, so this will allow us to get, to do more control. The same thing could be true for us out here, I'm just talking in the future for other options. But that's why at Mayso Manatees, since we're under a system, our system has failed, okay, what are the opportunities to build as one, as opposed to adding, you know? I think we had a lot of questions, the board had a lot of questions, you know, in 2009, will this work, will we save money? And we have, and so, this is one, this is a reason why we said, okay, you know, let's do a little bit more this time, or as a build, you know, please consider these options.
Well, we have numbers as to what the expectations are in savings, in energy savings?
Yeah. Well, again, it's hard to do it right now until we sink our teeth into doing the engineering part again.
And out here, just as perspective, our, I don't want to call it the promise, it was a different group, but the expectation was 10%, our goal was 15%. But the other part, the other component of controls is human behavior. And that has, you know, it helps us change, it makes things happen. But if we're not programming it a certain way, then we won't realize the benefits, you know? So, just wanted to share our, what we've experienced out here with a system that doesn't have as many controls. We have the computer programming, but we don't have all the direct, the DVC controls.
And to look at, you know, dollar for dollar savings, as a, you know, another piece of that puzzle is the energy cost itself, you know, what is gas prices, money's a lot for price. So, if those things go up, obviously, the savings may not be there dollar for dollar, but, you know, if you didn't do it, you can estimate what the savings might have been if you hadn't done, you know, if gas prices go up.
Well, what I would be looking for is if this new system can, can save us, I don't care what number you put in for gas prices, or electric prices, or any of that, just, this should save you 15% or 12% or 9%, whatever it is, that's the number that I'm looking for.
Because the realization we had out here, because it was a lot bigger building, you know, the dollars are bigger savings, but you're right, Tom, it's percentage.
Right, yeah. Yep. Because, I mean, we can figure out a number, it's just, I mean, based on what the current rate is. It'll fluctuate, it'll always be 9% or whatever. Did, back when we did the high school, did we have, the company that did the high school, did we have them look at Mayso, or was it just the high school in Black Earth?
Oh, we did it, we have, they offered, I think, I'd have to go back and look. We looked at all, the quote was much broader, I think they may have looked at all three.
I think they did.
I can remember the number.
Question about asphalt, the asphalt we're replacing is 20 years old.
Right.
Is, is that the general life of a parking lot?
You know, the life expectancy of asphalt, you know, does vary depending on what's underneath it, how the base was prepared, what the soil conditions are like underneath the base, know all those things. And that's why we want to, we want to make sure we know what we're getting into below, you know? It's very important to understand that. So, but yeah, generally speaking, I mean, asphalt, it should last at least that typically, if it's built correctly.
Would your company also, during the time that the blacktop is being laid, run tests to ensure that the depth of the blacktop was what was bid?
Definitely will, yeah, definitely will. And we'll, we'll have, as part of the bidding process, we require testing, a certain, independent tester coming in to test soil conditions and all those kind of compaction things that get done before the blacktop goes down to, you know, or above monitoring the thickness of the blacktop. And we may vary the thickness of the blacktop depending on where the blacktop is going. You know, usually, heavy traffic areas, or certainly with their semis going, usually is a little thicker paving, a few more, maybe another layer of blacktop paving, that kind of thing, so we'll be exploring all that too.
And another consideration of the roof work done, if you go back a couple of years, we had to do the clear story of the LMC roof first, and then we did the, what I'll call the high school roof, primarily the high school roof, roof 14, that also dealt with downspouts. And so, we now have downspouts in play. The question, as we do this, will be, one of the issues we saw prior to everything was water runoff based on the roof. And so, the other concept, which, you know, it's, it's an add, or in some cases, you know, ideally, we wouldn't have to do it, but it should be a strong consideration, is, is the water runoff, how do we make, ensure that there's not pooling of water? You can see in any, any pavement, and ours is no different, that if there's been pooling of water, or that water does not move off it, those over time create low spots. And, you know, you've noticed, you can see where we made the patches over the last couple summers, as well as the frequently used, that those, that's what the coring will help, help us understand. When we redid the pavement in front of the gym, the concrete, we thought we had base rock. That was not the case, we had to roll, roll base rock, that was more black soil than we'd like to believe. And that's, you know, we just don't know, but that's why the coring component, some people say, well, can't we, and it's a fair question, can we just put it over? But we have to know, you know, and we don't, we have to know what's put on. But we have to know, you know, and we don't, we have to know what's put below it, so that there's integrity there first, and then build accordingly. Perhaps we'll find some, some areas that were in good shape, other areas, you know, may require some mediation, and, you know, you know, you've kind of got your base, in a sense, roughly speaking, in, in pavements like ours, it's probably no less than three inches.
Usually six.
Oh, six, okay, no. No, you're not in the base rock.
Base rock.
Base rock, I was already on the top.
Okay. Usually three.
Three, but in high volume, and that's four or five. And that's what at the, at Black Earth Elementary, when we did it with the town of Black Earth, you know, where their plows running, that's five. But where we're parking, three, and then that's enough.
And that's why we haven't done a process yet, because we really don't know what soil conditions we have here. We need to, we might have to dig out some excess soil to, to get a good base in there. So, we'll, but we'll figure that out for you over the next month and a half or so.
Is that looking at drainage too possibly?
We'll be definitely looking at drainage.
Just a ditch, maybe some ice will stop, putting drains in there, okay?
Definitely.
Or the bury, burying the downspouts, and then providing, you know...
Or even, even mid, or, you know, drains.
Yeah, yeah, even as, as you remember, as you pass by the suburbs, to do the work that they did in front of the school was two semis full of cement cullumber. It was amazingly, easy to forget eight months later, but there's a lot of drainage, there's a lot of drainage just with that, that area, just pointing that out.
When you go to design this, and maybe this is a premature question, are you going to be factoring in any chance of changes out here, or are you, because I, I don't know, I don't know which direction I wanna lean right now as to the design of this, rather than...
Layout.
Yeah, rather than we, 'cause I guess I don't wanna spend a lot of money doing stuff that we're gonna end up possibly redoing in the next five years because we changed the building layout.
We wanna avoid that for sure.
Yeah.
And again, that's why we wanna try to come up with a plan that's flexible enough that's gonna give you options, and not design this into a corner here, whatever. So, what that might mean is, maybe we might find out that we don't wanna do a portion of it yet, you know? And that's perfectly fine too, so we'll, we'll have a good discussion with you on all of that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is there capability of, of increasing the parking area? I mean significantly, say a hundred cars?
I don't know if I can answer that yet, but we will look at that. The things that are gonna come into play are drainage, we need to make sure we have the drainage ditches and all those things sized appropriately. We might find that we need to have a retention area, with some of that parking water draining into a kind of retention basin, that would be a possibility, which might start to limit on how much parking we can expand, okay? So, it's not a real good answer for you yet, but we'll look at you there.
And also remember, our easement is, the trail easement is right here, so we'll have to keep that into consideration as, as a place marker. But I'm sure Brad's gonna say, what do you wanna do with this based on some...
That'll be a big question.
If, if, if we become a one, one campus district, is that, that's going to be possibly an additional forty cars?
Could be.
A day of extra...
Right. I, I would say in Asta and just people that are driving in, we probably have forty, I would say at least forty spots, if not sixty to eighty right now. That's changed. I mean, it was in, you know, when our high school was three fifty, we, we were full. We, you know, Asta's first couple of years, we were doing student, student lottery. At that point in time, you know, we probably had, I'd say roughly, about twenty to thirty staff, staff spots available. I think the other thing, you know, as you know, with this, these changes, we lost about ten spots right here, you know? And then the, the flow, and I guess, you know, I don't know if people have opinions today, but just based on what we've done temporarily for this year, is our pattern working, what, how we, 'cause this, in theory, this back row is more of a driving lane. Now, sometimes people park and, you know, but that's, that's gonna be another real important consideration there. But, and balancing, you know, the safety versus capacity. Yeah.
What about that blacked-out area on the left in front of the shed?
Potential ditch work.
Here?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think you can always move, move land, the ditch aligns probably quite well, but that's gonna be in topography. Brad, you see this more than I, but this, you know, you probably, there's a, if, if this changes, you're gonna have to probably, how should I put it, account for some retention, correct? Because this, this runs this way, you know, runs this way, goes underneath, that was something that was really missing.
Right.
So, this is underneath and over here, but the flow compared to previous falls, you know, that's, how should I put it? Working with eighty pound, and just also the notes off of this project also. Yeah, you may have space, as people alluded to earlier, you know, how we do this, you know, being good neighbors, I think is the big thing, just making people, probably got some space here. If you talk about, I'll call it unused space, you know, you've also got some stuff here. Yeah, it's just, what do you want it to look like, or what are we gonna use it? I mean, what's the intended use, or how do we do things so that we don't limit future options?
And maybe, maybe you decide we don't need to do it right now, as long as we have the opportunity to, you know, add to the parking situation easily, you know, we don't wanna act, I mean, redo things that's already been done by engines, so we'll wanna carefully do that.
And I would think even, we have some nice space on the high school side to drop this area, you know, at times, and I don't know what the tolerance is per se, but how much space do we want here? Just as you saw, you know, we had a little bit of green space over by the district office that was hard to mow, and hard, all that stuff, we just said, okay, it's gonna be pavement, you know, we've got a lot of green space here, so I think it's also making that conscious decision in terms of going back to the use, and, and what do we need? Because we've got some nice space here, and, you know, does that open up some opportunities too? Ten feet wide by four hundred feet's significant amount of property.
Mark, is there only two entrances for students now?
Students can come in this way.
Yeah, ours does not exist, it's up there.
This?
That's gone.
This is old, this is the old, this is just the old...
No, I meant like to go into the school, so we have the front, like, right here.
So, this is our main entrance?
Yeah.
And in the morning, the, the secondary entrance is open to students.
But that's the only two we have, we don't have anything in the back.
No, no, mm-mm. No, this is off-service back here.
Yeah, that's on me and then the... I just wish we could get you parking that way further, 'cause getting parking...
Well, it all used to be here, right?
Yeah.
As I look at some graduates, yes, I mean, that, yeah, I remember somebody telling me, it would've gone like that.
But...
So, there's obviously lots of things, okay?
Any other questions? Got anything else?
I think we're good, and, you know, just go ahead and receive.
Okay. All right, moving on, discuss possible action to hire HSR for designing consulting services for the Mayso Maney Elementary HVAC project.
This would be not to exceed forty-six thousand.
Yeah.
Would you like to add that in?
I would like to add that in.
All right. Did everybody hear that?
I get drums in my head.
Just the clubs.
Yeah. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Does it motion on the table to hire HSR for designing consulting services for the Mayso Maney Elementary HVAC project not to exceed forty-six thousand dollars? A discussion?
Both have thirty-three thousand.
Yeah, this is, I'm gonna clarify that that was from a just a simpler replace without the, if you look on the next page, under option one, the thirty-three thousand was a part of an initial goal for simply replace, no controls.
Is that a good question?
And again, it's not to exceed.
So, that's forty-six?
Forty-six, correct. Yes. And that's ten percent of the, the project that's proposed, or you know, estimated, shall we say, something like that. Everything else would have to be approved and then...
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Discuss possible action to hire HSR for design and consulting services for the middle high school pavement project not to exceed twenty-eight thousand. Move. Thank you. Discussion. Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Oh, yes as well. All right, do a motion to accept a thousand dollar donation from the Association of Wisconsin School Administrators for Asta Subways earning the High School Principal of the Year Award. I thought we were...
Two for a year and a half.
Do you have a second? Discussion. Congratulations again.
Yes.
Awesome. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Oh, yes as well. Motion to accept a two thousand dollar donation from the WHEF for language arts and art graphics design and track and field, one thousand per organization. Do you have a second?
Second.
Just wanna, this is in honor or from the Jim Arifin Trust, they donate two thousand dollars a year, and this is the allocation for this year.
Thank you very much. Other discussion. Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
James? Sandy?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yep.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Oh, yes as well. All right, future means, do we need any committees?
So, we have curriculum on the ninth.
Yeah.
Could work to confirm that. We do have, on the eleventh, I'll, I'll get a note out, one of the vendors is coming in for a presentation, basically three thirty to five thirty. If board members would like to attend, whether the curriculum committee or the board as a whole, just let me know, so I will post it accordingly. That is Wednesday, ninth is Wednesday, three thirty to five thirty in this room. We're trying to get a second presentation for, from another vendor, actually, we've got two other vendors we'd like to present.
This is for...
This is for math.
Yep.
Math, we're kinda in that second to third phase, so there'll be presentations and decisions based on that. All staff have been invited to attend the meeting here. And we're charged, ideally, will be late April, early May. Anybody can come?
Okay. Anything else?
And then we have buildings and grounds, we have tents set up for the twenty-third right now. And if things move faster, I'll let, I'll let HSR know, but the twenty-third will be end of year projects as well as the results of the work, and then options for the board to move forward, facilities and transportation, that will be it.
Will we hash out the medication formula for policy?
No, we're not, we're not. I'll talk to the VBS tomorrow.
You're anxious for that one, aren't you?
And just a reminder, on Monday the ninth, our board meeting is at Black Earth Elementary, and a, on the twenty-third is at, it is at Mayso Elementary.
Our facilities management and our facility transportation, that's six thirty, right?
Yep.
That's correct, and the councils will be also at the respect, policy, our committee meetings at respective, at the same schools, and then, meetings will be in the offices.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? So, move. Thank you. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close.